Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Milford Exempted Village School District. It's Thursday, June 15th, 6:00 PM. Let's call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs? Mrs. Chestnut? Mr. Miranda?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move on to the approval of the agenda, and we have an addendum tonight. I need a motion to approve those two items.
So moved.
Second.
In the way of discussion, I've already added, I've already taken this and transcribed it over, so I will, I will make reference when we come to them because they're highlighted in great big pink letters. So we will, we will move on from that. Mr. When we said Mr. Ray, Mr. Espy called the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2023 regular board meeting.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. Need approval of, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting addendum, May 18th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting, May 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. I need approval of the minutes of the emergency board meeting held June 13th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Do I need to abstain because I was not at this meeting?
You can if you'd like.
Okay, abstain.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. Okay, brings us to our first public commentary. Do we have anyone?
We do not.
Okay. Moving right ahead to the treasurer's report, Mr. John Espy.
Thank you, President Miranda and members of the board. I wanted to give you a update on our finances for May. We're now 91.67% through the fiscal year, so only one month left. The COPS proceeds have been posted to the OO2 fund, the OO4 fund, and the O10 fund. We have a new program with our bank fifth third where we're able to essentially secure the interest rate that's at the prime interest rate. So we're getting now $4,000 of interest a day, which is a huge swing for the district. It has the opportunity to be a $1.5 million additional revenue in. However, I don't like to count those revenues until they're in the bank. So I've been conservative with the forecast going forward, but that is a very good thing in terms of our interest revenue. In terms of expenditures, we're now trending 99.94% accurate in April. Now we're at 99.998% accurate in May, so we're getting closer. Revenue is 99.99% accurate to the forecast. Some items of timing is we had TIF revenue that posted in June versus May, and that's looking back at the last normal year, which is fiscal year '21, where we had all the TIF revenue in one fiscal year. Additionally, when we look down at the interest revenue, you'll see 173 and change for May month-to-date, which brings us to 560,000. And the bond and COPS fund received 3,654,14. The reason for that being a little bit lower this month is because we moved investments into Red Tree Investments. So it's not really capturing a full year of interest, however, we'll see that come back up June and beyond for a fiscal year-to-date of just a little bit over 1 million. Some finance items that I'm working on in June, we're working on closing the fiscal year '23 books with the treasurer's office team. It really takes the entire team between payroll and accounts payable to make that happen, as well as all of our building secretaries and department secretaries to make sure that we're getting that process done. So I just want to say good job to all of those people that are making that happen. We've also completed the budget process for fiscal year '24 with all the departments. We're getting those loaded. So we'll be able to essentially spend those funds once we get into next fiscal year. We're also evaluating processes from this fiscal year to inform better processes for next year. We're creating process documents for all administrator secretaries and department managers on basically the policies that, we're outlining board policies and referencing those, but we're also just looking at the fiscal management of the district and making sure everyone's on the same page going forward. And part of the Gallup information that we just got trained on or had a meeting on just a couple of days ago, I'm going to be setting up monthly meetings with my team to develop a cross-training plan for everyone. So that's going to be a good thing going forward. Finally, I wanted to bring up the CUP report data. So you might have seen a graphic like this in prior months. This is now the 2022 CUP report data that was just released this spring. When you look at this, out of the 31 districts in Claremont and Hamilton County, Milford's expenditures per pupil are the seventh lowest and far below the average. So when we look at the average, it is sitting at $14,692.48 per student, and Milford was at 12,221.41. So good things in terms of financial, being financially conservative while still achieving at a high level with our students. That, that is all I have for you for that first portion of the reports. Any questions?
I have one, a couple. So, um, when we were trying to close the books in time this year?
Absolutely. Yeah.
And your process comments, can you tell me a little bit about what we should expect from the processes from an outcome standpoint? Because I think it's worthwhile. You already know how I feel about that. What are the type of things we see coming from that?
I think just financial policies, making sure that people are following all the protocols, putting in a requisition, making sure they have a PO in place before a purchase is made. Also, just teaching and empowering everyone how to find the data in the financial software, getting the budget reports, knowing where they are from a revenue standpoint, and also just giving onus to some of the department managers and administrators with, with their budgets. That was something, when I went around with every administrator, I sat with each one, and we talked about how to get around in the software. So what I'm trying to do now is reinforce that with graphics and screenshots and, and just kind of putting it all down on paper.
So that's how we do it. You're trying to reduce risk by reducing errors?
Absolutely. Always.
And are these processes workflow related as well? So there are ways that you're mapping what we're doing and finding better ways to do it, or that's not part of it?
I think it's all part of it. It's all encompassing. It's all encompassing. We're looking at workflow. We're looking at just trying to save people time, but also be more efficient and more accurate. That's really, really what it comes down to.
Well, thanks for the work. My last is about the CUP report. I know we don't have 2023 yet. You've been pretty good at forecasting. Where do you think we'll land in 2023? Cost per pupil?
I think it's going to be higher, just because our expenses were higher. I think we're still going to be below average, though. So I think we're going to be closer to the average, but I still think we're going to be, you know, far below some of the higher spenders. You'll notice a couple of the districts at the top have near $20,000 per pupil expenditures.
You would expect the average to move up as well, right, inflation?
Yeah, I would imagine that's going to happen as well. And that's part of the funding formula and why it's, you know, we're, we're hearing about right now using inputs of 2022 data. That's why that's so important for districts, to get a better idea of the cost to educate pupils now versus what it was in 2017, '18.
Okay, anything else?
I think we actually need a motion and a second on this.
I'm getting to that.
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the treasurer's board reports for May 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Guess we have no discussions, so call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on into final appropriations and amended certificate for fiscal year '23. This is required by the county auditor, where we dial in our last, last appropriation resolution and last amended certificate. So I'm just seeking approval for that to be able to file that with the county auditor.
Okay, I need, excuse me, I need a motion to approve the final appropriation for fiscal year 2023 and the amended certificate.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
Looking forward to, no, item three is fiscal year '24 temporary appropriations. This, for the most part, is 25% of our ending appropriations that you just approved. There are a couple of funds that are a little bit higher than that, which are the building funds related to the middle school and also the Nest, as well as the auditorium. So those are sitting a little bit higher than that 25%. I will be coming back to you in July with permanent appropriations for fiscal year '24.
So basically, what we're doing is we're approving enough money to get us started into the new fiscal year.
Exactly. I have to have your approval before we can spend a cent on July 1nd forward.
Sounds like a good idea.
And, and why are two of these higher than 25%?
They're the building funds. So the OO4 fund and the O10 fund, which is where the monies reside for our building projects. It's unlikely that we would get an invoice that high to meet those appropriations, but I just like to keep them high, a little bit higher, just to be able to pay those bills. Okay?
Okay, I need a motion to approve fiscal year '24 temporary appropriations.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say one thing to the students that are here, because I know you guys come to kind of learn how these board meetings work. So I just want to let you know that last week, we had committee meetings all day on Thursday. So we talk about all of this in much more detail and greater length. So when you come here and it's just like a kind of a quick review and we shake our head and vote yes, like we've discussed all of this for like, what, seven hours last Thursday? So that's just the process.
Yeah, we do spend a long day in here on Thursday.
That's a common message over here.
Yes, it is. Neither you nor I delivered it. That was good.
I know. It's the first time. Thank you, Melissa.
The people that have been here before understand what I'm saying. So, Mr. Desby, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
All right, item four are advances for fiscal year '23. We're in the process of having a final expense report from fiscal year '22 revised. And so that is the 516 OO22 fund that you see there. We will get this money from the, from the state. We're just not going to, we may not get it until July. So what I've asked is, that's the amount that we are negative in that fund that we've already spent and are going to draw down from the state. It's this little bit of an insurance policy to make sure that we keep the 516 fund at zero or positive. A little bit further information. June is a difficult month because I have to request an advance on that drawdown from the state. And so what we do is we take our payroll, we look at a payroll, typical payroll, we multiply it by two, then I ask for five more percent than that. But with, with all the moving parts of June and also paying out invoices that we have as well, I'm just asking for the ability to be able to advance any fund that's needed. I will report on any fund that's advanced, and then July 1, as soon as the next fiscal year is open, we will take that advance and put it back in the general fund. So it's essentially just buying the district and insurance policy to make sure that our funds are zero or greater and that we're in compliance with the county auditor and state auditor.
Yeah, that makes, that makes our audits much cleaner when we do that.
Yes.
And isn't it fair to say it's a timing issue for the funding?
It's totally timing.
I mean, at the end of the day, we are advancing because of timing.
Exactly. We have a fiscal year that's 12 months, and we have a grant year that's 15 months. And so we will bring in those funds in months 13, 14, and 15. So we always are made whole on that. It's just a purely timing, like you said, Mr. Combs.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion to approve fiscal year 2023 advances as outlined by Mr. Espy.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or discussions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
All right, C5, we also have an addendum that we can also, I would seek for approval at the same time as C5. This is purely items that are over $25,000, and per board policy, we have to seek approval. All of these items are part of the appropriations, so there's no surprises in here. These are contracts that we have with our various vendors that I'm just seeking approval for, so we can initiate POs and, and get those contracts signed.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the contracts that are outlined here in your agenda.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
John, hold on. John or, or someone, because I know Jenny, you know these very, very well. Is there anything about these five that are materially different from the year before that we should know about? I don't remember any discussion that they were significant changes in any of these. I just want to confirm that.
That is correct. We've been working with these outside placements for many years, and it's just a yearly process.
Yep.
We always evaluate the needs of the students and the, they are needing to be in the process.
Okay.
And I would say that the, the two that aren't, that haven't been in place before are the BSN Sports. That's a program that is going to be very advantageous to our athletic, athletic program and provide a reduced cost in uniforms. And also the contract for the storage facility or the storage containers that's needed during the building of the Nest project.
Thank you.
Okay. Now let's call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
Number six is going to be donations. We had three AEDs that were donated for use at the athletic facilities by the Athletic Boosters, as well as Marilyn Burkle donated $500 to the flights program at Milford High School. And we thank those, thank those entities for those donations.
Can I need a motion to approve these donations as outlined by Mr. Espy?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
The quickest yes you'll ever hear from me is coming up.
And all of us. Call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks to, thanks to both, Boosters and Ms. Burkle.
Number seven is going to be disposal, disposal of items. These are items that are no longer of use to the district, and also some of them are books that you'll see as the attachment of letter C and letters A and B. There were some questions last week in the, in the finance committee meeting about what process we take when we're donating books or disposing of books. And so I was able to reach out to our library and media specialist, Mrs. Chandler, at the high school, which is where these items came from. Basically, what these books are, is essentially set, there's a set place in the library for students to be able to take these books, and they're marked down by what student would take these books that the district is disposing of. Also, items are taken to the Salvation Army if they're not taken from that, you know, from that, that pile or that location in the library. And the only books that are actually thrown away are ones that are moldy or just falling apart that aren't really of use anymore. So I was able to get that information.
Do they ever donate to crayons to computers?
I, I don't think that they do, but I'd be happy to have that conversation.
I'm happy to take them there, just because teachers can go in there and shop.
Yeah, I will actually talk to Mrs. Chandler about that, but, but maybe we can alternate or... something like that. But that's what we're seeking right there in the disposal.
I need a motion to approve the disposal of these items.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Call or roll?
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
Number eight is an MOU with MCEA. This is guidance that we received from the state employee retirement board that was our system, I should say, state employee retirement system, that any hourly staff that is receiving a one-time stipend or supplemental, it really needs to be split out and added to their hourly pay to be counted towards retirement. And that's something that a lot of these employees that are in these positions are counting on in terms of this being counted towards their retirement. So we're just seeking the board's approval to enter into this with the MCEA.
Okay, I need a motion to approve this MOU with the MCEA.
So moved. Second?
Discussion?
So John, we talked about this in a finance committee meeting and it's my understanding, and you can clarify, that we pay certain individuals stipends, certain employees stipends, and this, it's being recommended that we fall in line with most other districts and that we no longer provide a one lump sum stipend. We add it to an hourly pay that is then calculated in the retirement, correct? So it's, there's no additional cost to the district except, and I will point out, except that we were not paying retirement benefits on the stipend and now we are paying retirement benefits on the stipend. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
We actually were paying retirement benefits on it. However, in order to get in line with really how it should be, and I would actually argue that a lot of districts aren't doing this correctly.
Oh, I thought we said they are.
I think it's probably 50/50.
Okay.
But there are a lot of districts that are processing it, like those one-time stipends. But this is really the way it needs to be done in terms of how the state employee retirement system accepts these funds. But there's really no difference between what we've been doing, paying it as a lump sum or paying it as an hourly rate. It's just the way that they would like to accept it.
And during interview processes, we are describing to these employees their hourly pay and then we have to spend another few minutes describing where the stipend is actually bringing their hourly pay to a different level. And now the conversation's a little bit more straightforward. Is that fair to say?
It will be. We're still going to have salary lanes. I think that as we go through perhaps the next negotiation process, we can add that to the salary columns to make it a little bit easier and so we don't have a separate document we're referring to. But yeah, it's much more straightforward now.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I just like the words, no additional cost to the district.
Me too.
Always. Call or roll?
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for not presenting another five-year forecast this month.
Thank you.
For thanking me.
Yes, thank you for thanking me.
Just teasing, John.
Yes.
Okay, let's move forward to item D, Superintendent's Misses, Superintendent John Spicer.
Thank you, President Miranda, members of the board. I'm going to call Jeff Johnson to the podium. We do have some updates on the middle school. He's got some pictures we want to show you.
I'm going to have to move a little bit because I can't see from the back of my head. Just wanted to give a little bit of an update on some of the stuff we've been doing over the last month. This actually today looks a lot different than the picture depicts because all those trees you see in there are gone. This is the tree line that kind of separates Trinity United Methodist Church from our property and we came to an agreement, we met with Trinity in the spring, and we've come to an agreement to put our shot and disc area in their field. And so part of the agreement to do that was we were going to clear out all those trees, kind of clean the area up. We're going to do a little bit of grading to help with some of the grading there. They're actually going to plant some trees, we're going to plant some trees, and they're going to allow us for a minimum of the next three years to use that area for our shot and disc area because we're losing it because of the construction of the middle school. And we've actually talked about potentially making that more of a long-term semi-permanent arrangement. So that work occurred this week. I actually overheard Paul talking in the office today about how drastic the difference is if you look at that. So if you're familiar with that, it is a pretty big difference. This is just our HVAC project at the high school. Some of the demolition that's been occurring, these are the units that serve the gymnasium and the auditorium that we're replacing. And so they've been doing some demo work up in the mezzanine up there. This is a new rooftop unit that was installed this week over the auxiliary gym. If you recall, we have converted our auxiliary gym into the weight room. That room has never been air-conditioned. We've kind of rigged the system during testing in past years to put some air conditioning in there. But part of that HVAC project is to put in a permanent unit that will both heat and cool the auxiliary gym. This is part of the roofing project. This is the first section of the roof that they've been working on. So that work started about, they've been installing materials for a while, but it really started in earnest about two weeks ago. So that's the roofing project we've got at the high school. And this is the auditorium. If you look, this is actually, if you recall, in the auditorium, we had a orchestra pit that my understanding was long before I got here, after I left as a kid, before I got here as an adult, that they filled that in. We actually have a system that will, we can do both. We've actually got some platforms that are removable so we can open up the orchestra pit to either put an orchestra or potentially patrons in there, or we can put the platforms back on and we can have that full stage like we've had for the last 30 years. And this kind of shows the opening up of the front of that stage of the high school. Is that it or do I have one more? Anybody who's been out there has seen some dirt work going on primarily related to the fieldhouse. We did receive from OFCC, we approved just earlier today the emergency board meeting that we had earlier this week to approve the early site and early procurement GMP for the middle school. So that work is beginning to start in earnest and over the next few days, you're going to start seeing a lot more activity out there as far as that work beginning. Still working through, you know, in order to demo those buildings, we actually have to have an EPA permit. We're in the process of getting that. We've got, Duke has to come out and remove some poles. A lot of dirt's been moved, even just again over the last day or two. And going into next week, you're going to see a lot more dirt work going on out there on the project site. So we're getting going. We've got a lot of work to do before school opens up in August and everybody's raring to go. So things are tight but looking good.
Jeff, can you explain, as we talked about in committee meeting, just for anyone that might watch this meeting later, why we had to have that emergency meeting? Explain like the permit process and the steps that we talked about.
So OFCC will not approve the GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price, essentially the contract with Conger, and issue a notice to proceed until a permit is in place. So we were waiting on the permit to be approved by Claremont County. They were well, they were within their timeline, but you know, we submit the drawings, they have some questions, some clarifications, some things went back and forth. We finally received the approved permit a week ago tomorrow. So once that permit was approved, you know, the process of getting the GMP in, and as I said, things, we're okay, but things are tight. And at this point in time, literally every day matters. So that's why we asked for the emergency special board meeting earlier this week. If we'd have waited till tonight to get that approved, you know, it's Friday, it's the summer, you know, I don't know that we would have gotten the signatures needed tomorrow. It would have leaked into next week. And now all of a sudden, you know, two days of approval turns into potentially a week's delay. So that's why we asked for that emergency board meeting to get that approved early.
I just had a question about the shot and disc area. So were the trees removed so that the boundary between Trinity and the school was like more flattened out then?
There is a little bit of grading work because in that area, there's some low spots that hold water really on their property. You know, rather than like paying them rent to use their field, we kind of came to an agreement that really was a win-win for both the church and the district. You know, we've got the equipment out there running a dozer across that and grading some stuff really doesn't cost us anything. It does provide access to get from our stadium track facility to that area and it just kind of cleans things up for both of us. So it was a little bit of a win-win. You know, obviously clearing those trees out and reseeding that costs the district some money, but no more, probably less than a reasonable rental rate over the next three years to use their property.
Auditorium, when's the targeted completion date again for that?
December 31 of this year.
And have they made more progress on the stage since we?
Stage is gone. So the picture I showed, the concrete was gone and part of the decking underneath of it was removed, but not all of it. But as of yesterday, I think all the decking's gone. So the stage is cut back to where it needs to be cut back to.
You shared in committee, we're on track, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Good. Let's see, any other questions? Okay, hearing none.
Thank you, sorry, I just said thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's move on to human resources business, Superintendent John Spicer.
Thank you, President Miranda, members of the board, asking for your approval of items one through four under human resources.
Okay, and in doing such, we've got, we've got an addition to item 1A, which is in your, in your addendum.
Yes, we have 1A and 1B in the addendum.
1B in the addendum.
2B and 2K.
Correct. So we need a motion to approve items one through, bear with me here, four for human resources.
Second?
Discussion?
Another reminder that we have a personnel committee the week before this and Jenny Berkeley and John and others help us understand any of the details that are associated with all of the topics you see from resignations to hires to various contract renewals. Everything that you see here, we've openly discussed, or if we've had questions, they've answered. So just know again, this is a replay of Ms. Nolan's comment. The bobbleheads that you'll see up here, they've been discussed a week ago. So just another reminder that there's a lot here and we're going to put it to a vote and it's been discussed.
Yeah, on Thursday, we start at 7:30 with finance and we go to building and grounds. We take a little bit of a break around lunchtime and we come back with curriculum and personnel and communications. And on Friday, we actually had a separate fine arts, extracurricular, athletic, and technology meeting. So it's a long couple of days. Any other discussion? Let's call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to curriculum instruction, Superintendent John Spicer.
Thank you, President Miranda, members of the board, asking for your approval of curriculum pay under number one.
Okay, I need a motion to approve curriculum pay as outlined in item one, items A through J.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? Call or roll?
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. Now we move on to business operations, Superintendent John Spicer.
Thank you, President Miranda, members of the board, asking for your approval of the transportation being impractical in number one.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the deeming of transportation impractical for the five students that are listed there.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? It's the only thing I can say is it's good to get them notified so they've got the summer to figure out what they're going to do. There have been times in the past where it's been a little tighter and they didn't have much time, the parents of these students didn't have much time to adjust. I think we've given them enough time to adjust and that's good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson and everyone that's involved in this.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to point out too that their ODE changed the law, so we have to, there has to be board approval at least 30 days prior to the beginning of school. July's not enough time, so that's why we're bringing this in June to your point, Mr. Miranda.
Yeah, four years ago was somewhat of a difficult meeting to watch. So anyway, we've got a motion and a second. What do we call the roll?
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. We now have another separate item on there, Mr. Spicer.
Actually, Mr. Desby put that up in his section.
I actually rolled that into contract since it's really a contract approval. We can take a separate vote if you'd like, however, I did mention that.
It's, it is on the agenda, I think we should do that.
Let's go ahead and take a separate vote.
All right, asking for your approval of item B, in business operations, the mobile mini approval.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? My knowledge of this is this is, this is a project to put together temporary locker rooms for the stadium while we're deconstructing the Robbins Building and the bus garage. This will be in effect for football and also in the spring for track and lacrosse. And it's paid for on a monthly, the rental of this equipment is paid for on a monthly basis. While I'm sure we're not at the point of saying it's likely that we would be able to move these out sooner, it is a possibility that we could save some money on there if we're getting the athletic wing over there taken care of in a very timely fashion, we might be able to use that in the spring. So we will, we will see and we'll adjust that at the end of the year, I guess, Mr. Johnson? There you go.
Yes, Mr. Miranda, basically everything you said is correct. These are temporary locker rooms that will be inside of the stadium. And if football season's over, football soccer season's over and things are looking good and we think we won't need them in the spring, we could have them removed early. I won't say that we, essentially you pay for delivery and removal upfront and then you pay a monthly rental. That's the way it works with modulars. That's essentially what these are. One of them's a double wide, so it's 24 by 60 that'll sit on the south side of the stadium. And then on the north side of the stadium, we don't have room to put a double wide together, so it'll be two 12 by 60 trailers that'll sit end to end.
And Jeff, can you remind a group what we're paying monthly for those?
I don't have it in front of me. Probably click on that link and the quote's there.
I think it's about halfway.
I can tell you the total cost.
Yeah, so the double wide is $2,200 a month. And if you scroll down, keep going, this right there, 850 times two, so $1,900 will be for the two 12 by 60s.
Or 4,000 bucks.
Or 1,700.
1,700.
17, yes.
Sorry.
What's the total again?
Hundred, it's 107,000.
107, okay. I know, I know it was just north of 100, I just wasn't sure of the breakdown of rental versus.
It's also a little difficult because it includes, it says estimated taxes, which we don't pay. So I think it would be better than that, but that's worst case scenario. And this is part of the borrowing for the nest. So this is not coming from, directly from the general fund.
It's inside of that, yeah, okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, correct, Mr. Espy?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Let's call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, thank you. And I, and I asked us to vote on that because that was in the addendum under business operations. I wanted to do that there.
And we have not addressed the concluding item C yet, correct?
No, we, we have not. We've got a couple, one more thing to do before we get there. Okay, so this brings us to our second public participation. Do we have anyone?
I have none.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move into a discussion of the nicotine, alcohol and drug testing policies.
Okay, well, I initiated this conversation after talking with a family. Dave and John and I spoke with a family, which kind of spurred some of these discussions over the last couple of months. All of our students that participate in athletics or extracurricular activities, those are privilege activities. It's not a right, it's a privilege. And all of those students are subjected to our random drug testing policy. And I proposed that the only demographic of student we have that also has a privilege are students with parking passes. And I think since Milford means all, we repeat that all the time, that everyone should be subjected to the same conditions of a privilege. Driving under the influence is far more serious than probably playing baseball or football under, under the influence. Operating a vehicle on a crowded parking lot, we talk all the time about how crowded it is. There's kids walking all over. It just seems that it is fair, that it is the right thing to do to put all students that have a privilege under the same conditions. And so we talked about that actually over the last couple of months at multiple committee meetings. Anyone else want to weigh in on?
I, I agree, first of all, in, in your, your comments. And if I'm not mistaken, isn't it quite common in other public school districts that the, the driving privilege that you're talking about is required, you're required to be under the same policy of drug, alcohol, nicotine? Is that correct?
I've actually looked at a lot of different districts and yes, some have, it's different. Some have baseline, in order to get a parking pass, you have to do a drug test point blank. We're just suggesting adding into the random pool that every other student with a privilege has. We talked about the differences in what the consequence might be. Some districts have a consequence, like first offense, you might lose fifteen or thirty days. The second consequence, you might lose thirty or fifty days, depending on how you're starting that. Other districts follow the athletic and activity policy where it's 20%, like you lose 20% of your days, which is 36 days on your first offense. Second offense increases to 50%. So I'm not sure how, how we want to handle the consequences. We also talked about a lot of these students overlap. Students with parking passes are also athletes or participate in different activities. So the number of kids we're actually adding into that random pool is not that many overall. And if, what we talked about in committee, that if a student has both a parking pass and an activity, the consequence would be the activity, not the parking.
Is Paul here?
Paul's here.
So Paul, in order for this board to take action and present a policy change here, share with us exactly what needs to happen without waiting till the next policy committee meeting to discuss it because they're roughly ninety days apart. And that doesn't give our student drivers, if this board approves, creates and approves that new policy, enough time to step into the front of the year and be surprised. So I'd love to know, how do we expedite this if this board chooses to implement a new policy?
And to that point, we also would need to act on this prior to the application process for parking passes to go out and add it to final forms to have parents and students sign off. And we also talked with the parking spots being numbered. That'll be very easy to decide who is, like if, if I'm caught and my spot should be empty.
There were quite a few questions packed in there, so I'll do my best to peel it back. First, you have a vehicle at any time to put a policy in place immediately. You suspend the two readings of a policy. If it's a regulation, you simply just, we do the courtesy of presenting it publicly, but you do, you are not required to present a regulation. What I would advise is that you have enough time to do this in July, which is when we will bring you the student handbooks. So we will make sure that the drug testing policy, which would identify the regulation, who is in the pool, all you need to do is add a number four. I think I just looked, you know, you just add the number four. If you have a parking pass, you're in the pool every Monday to be randomly drug tested. That would give us plenty of times to, plenty of time to update it in the handbook. And it would give us plenty of times to load it in final forms. And just so everybody knows in final forms, if we add something, which we typically don't do late, you just sign off on it later. But it, as long as it lives and it's married in those several places, you have plenty of time. High school doesn't send out anything for parking passes until probably the first of August before kids come back. So it's, it's just a matter of making sure on that application that they're aware that they're in the drug pool. And as you accurately stated, we probably aren't greatly increasing the number of students in the pool because there's a lot of crossover. But those are your vehicles as a board to move quickly. And we don't have to, I think it's always a good reminder for everybody's educational purposes. We don't have to have a policy meeting. We can always read these or bring these to your committee meetings.
I was going to say, we can do, we could, we could do a first reading in the committee meeting and then come to a vote next week? Is that fair?
It doesn't quite work like that. You would have to actually suspend the two readings here. You would take a vote to suspend two readings. And then you would approve that policy right after you suspend the two readings and then you reinstate the two readings. So I had that right? Okay, John will always keep me on track, but, so you have a vehicle at any time.
There is a vehicle to take care of that.
Yeah, and you know, we have discussed in the policy committee a little bit, and Melissa's been joining us for this riveting experience, that you can, Kenna's always often asked, when is it, is it always best to have two readings? But there are times when laws change. I think COVID is a really good one, when your board meetings could go remote. You didn't have sixty days to make it, you know, to read it once and then do it again. So you as a board have that vehicle that where you just suspend the reading twice. But for the public too, I think it's important, there are policies and there are regulations. And regulations are usually how you bring a policy to life. So the state will say you have to have a intra-district open enrollment policy, but then you create your regulation about how you're going to make that work in Milford. So we have to go back through, but I think our regulation has more of the, the bite of what we need and that can be quickly just read publicly in July. We have plenty of time. We haven't brought you handbooks yet. Part of the policy review is also looking at our staff handbook, our student handbook and our policies and making sure they're all lining up. And that's been well worth the investment of a few thousand dollars itself. While we have strong search, you know, we have student rights and for searches and interrogation in schools, it's not in our handbook. So there are things that we're finding out as we go through, it's been many years. But you have vehicles, we can get this done in July. And yes, the parking spots are being numbered, two reasons. Jeff loves the numbering, by the way. Two is we are losing some spots. The fence, we are putting up a temporary fence because of construction. And two, when you, when you move to wanting to enforce something for students to make good choices, we need to make sure that, you know, we're not parking, we're festival style, so it'd be really hard to monitor. If you're spot five and you got caught and the only thing is you have a parking pass, we're going to, spot five should be empty.
Thanks, Paul.
Any other discussion there on this item?
So are we adding that to next month? Or do you want, can we add the rescinding of the two readings now or do we do that next month?
My suggestion would be, when you have the policy, you, you would approve waiving the first two readings of that specific policy. Then you would approve that policy so you don't have to go back and reinstate the reading of the two policies going.
So I'm guessing, I'm guessing that the July 13th meeting that we have for CNI and Personnel and everything in that afternoon, we could add this in, into one of those as an item. Go through the process and make sure we all understand what it says. And then do what Mr. Espy suggested in the July meeting. That way we'll have enough time to get it on the books before people have to start signing up and doing things.
Yeah, and to answer the, I just wanted to answer Mr. Combs' question. You would have a resolution to waive the first and second reading of that policy, that specific policy. And then two, you would vote on the policy. Two separate votes.
The third one too, right?
No.
To reinstate the policy?
No, because you would reference that specific policy when you say you're waiving the first and second readings.
And, and who officially amends our policy? Is that Kenna or is that Bronston or who does that?
So what we'll do is we'll send you, we'll, we'll write it up as such that we'll take the current policy or regulation and we'll write up our revision. We will send it to Bronston to have him look at it. When you vote on it, Kenna literally types, because you're the body that votes on it, she types what you voted and agreed to and then updates it in board docs. So we will have a mock-up for you at one of the committee meetings next month.
And it sounds like everyone understands the intent here. You, 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 everyone understands the intent.
Yeah, we, in full transparency, I'm glad we're talking about it because we mentioned you wanted to be a little more public. But there was 100% agreement moving forward after we heard the intent, we discussed it, even brought in our athletic directors, both of them, and Mr. Kaufman, our director of fine arts and extracurriculars. There's 100% commitment to move forward and get it done. So we're, we're all on the same page. We just, we'll up the timeline, which is fine, and we'll have it for you, a mock-up in July.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds, sounds great. We're now going to move into open discussion. Anything any board members have to add?
I have a feeling you do.
Very brief. Mrs. Chestnut would be very proud of me because I'm going to do this very quickly. Good news report. Milford High School had their graduation on May 20th at the Centos Center. We graduated 489 seniors. It was a great show. Complete with, for the, I think the third straight year, we've had the confetti cannons that go off when they turn their tassels. It's a, it's a really cool event. There's, there's some videos out online if you can find one of them, it's really neat. Secondly, Frontier Days Parade was held on June 1st in downtown Milford, kicking off the Frontier Days weekend. Our administration, as well as board members, represented our district in the parade for the third consecutive year. And I hope that, I hope that continues to go on. That's a great event, it's a fun event. And Mr. Spicer particularly enjoys getting out and, and getting with the crowd on that.
It's fun.
Couple of dates to remember that are a little bit off in the distance. We have teacher convocation on Monday, August the 14th. And that's going to be, John, where is that going to be again, I'm sorry?
Crossroads Eastgate.
Crossroads Eastgate, okay.
Todd Whitaker is the headline speaker, well-known author, public speaker. His books, his most famous book probably is What Great Teachers Do Differently.
So we're looking forward to that. And the next day, which is two calendar months away, is the first day of school. For those of you who are enjoying your summer, you're two months away from being back in the classroom again. So, and we're, we're looking forward to having you back there and kicking the, kicking the year off right. So everybody's going, oh, I hate that. Enjoy your summer. That is all I have, anybody else, anything? Okay? Okay, at this time, the board is going to move into executive session. I need a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of a public employee.
So moved.
Discussion, I'm going to say there is no discussion on this item because it is executive session, so let's call the roll.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes. For those of you who are here, we will not be coming back after we are in executive session. We will adjourn from there, so there, there will be no votes taken other than the vote to adjourn. So this concludes this meeting. Enjoy your evening. Thank you very much.